It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. I will call this meeting the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If you could please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Culpe.
Here.
Mr. Newell and Mr. Posey are not here. We will go to reading of casualties. Chief Stigelmeier.
Good evening, Board. The following is the list of the first responder casualties for the period of October 19th through November 1st, 2022. Police Officer Stephen R. Northam II, Carrollton Police Department, Texas, end of watch October 19th, 2022. Officer Jorge Arias, United States Department of Homeland Security, Customs and Border Protection, end of watch October 19th, 2022. And Police Officer Logan K. Medlock, London Police Department, Kentucky, end of watch October 30th, 2022.
Could please join me in recognizing a moment of silence? Do we have any guests or presentations?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culpe.
Aye.
New business, Chief Stigelmeier, liquor permit.
Good evening again, Board. In your package, you received a application to transfer a liquor permit, and it's going to be transferred from First Food First Global Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Bravo at 2770 Miami'sburg Centerville Road. And the transfer is going to be going to Bravo Brio Restaurants, Inc., doing business as Bravo in both floors and patio at 2770 Miami'sburg Centerville Road. The transfers for a D1, a D2, a D3, and a D6 permit. And just for the Board's information, the D1 is for beer-only on-premises consumption until 1:00 AM. A D2 is wine and mixed beverages for on-premises consumption until 1:00 AM. A D3 is spirituous liquor for on-premise consumption until 1:00 AM. And a D6 is sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM and midnight. The police department has no reason not to grant this transfer, and I'm available for any questions. If so, does not matter.
You also have Resolution 95.
Board, in your packet also is the resolution to amend appropriation of funds to add money to my vehicle maintenance budget. We anticipated from beginning of this year to have six new vehicles in my fleet by this time. And due to supply and demand constraints, we have not received these vehicles yet. So therefore, some of our older vehicles needed some maintenance that was really not planned that we were going to be having at this time. We're asking for $15,000 to be re-appropriated to that line item, and that has been cleared through the Finance Department. The funds are available, and I'm available for any questions.
Resolution 96, Mr. Carlson.
Good evening, Board. Providing your packets is a draft copy of a resolution, an agreement, rather, that would allow Miami Township to engage in a housing repair service program with County Corp. The substance of this program is a first, sort of, in very active community development for our community by grabbing community development block grant funding, an amount of $45,000 and a local match of $5,000. This would allow us to stand up a sort of pilot program for a housing rehabilitation program. We've looked at a floor of around $6,000 and a ceiling of around $10,000 for projects. Applications would be provided by community development staff directly in response to violations of the property maintenance code, larger ticket items, very porous-shaped roofs, windows, doors, things that make a pretty significant impact in a community, to provide funding for lower-income groups through the CDBG provisions to allow them to get that fixed through this grant program. The goal would be, by the end of next year, to move through this funding. Again, the administrative fee at this time is $1,500 for County Corp. So this program would be a smaller start between four to five projects likely in this first run. If it is successful, we could then pursue larger funding, but starting at a smaller amount would allow us to get a feel for how the program works with County Corp. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
I just hope we're able to capture before-and-after pictures, and we can maybe do something in the newsletter if that's okay with the homeowner.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I apologize. I did not get an updated agenda. Is there item 97 at this time?
Yes.
Good evening, Board. We do have a Resolution 97-2022. This is a resolution to authorize natural gas aggregation agreement. We do have a representative from Treble Energy here tonight to present to you a proposal to, again, authorize a potential agreement. This would be dependent on them being able to negotiate a final price that would be acceptable. The resolution that we have for you tonight does have two blanks in that, and that is for a not-to-exceed price, and then also for the term of the agreement. And again, Treble is going to present some options to you on how you would like to proceed in terms of the length of the agreement that you would want to enter into. I provided you with a lot of information in a memo and some of the attached information. Obviously, the natural gas market has been fairly volatile this year. It has risen and fallen a couple of times, but most recently has been on the decline, and part of that is simply due to the weather, which has increased potential supply of storage of natural gas within the U.S., which, again, has driven down the price. And that has opened up an opportunity to potentially capture a lower price now that would provide a backstop for residents going into the winter heating season. The urgency at this time is that if we don't enact something within the next few weeks, it'd be unlikely that the program would be able to be started in time to actually benefit anyone over the immediate winter heating season. And then, at that point, it would be probably more likely that we would want to simply wait until next spring to see again if prices fell before entering into a long-term contract. But at this point, I'll invite Joe Garrett to come up and explain all of this in more detail and go through what they're currently seeing in the market and the recommendations that they have for you, so.
All right. Thank you, and good evening. Chris did a pretty good job of explaining that, probably faster than I would have. But to that point, those two graphs that I brought you, and the one that looks like this, I want to focus real quickly on. And part of the problem with the markets right now is if you look at that graph, that is just October's daily settlement graph. So if you look there, which appears to be about October 22nd, you see that the price dropped below $5. But as you can see, by probably the 25th, it's back up over $6, which makes trying to get something in time and say, "Oh, let's hold a meeting," requires at least notice, and it's nearly impossible to do right now. The concern is, what's January and February going to look like for residents right now, today? If the pricing for November holds, it's not so bad. If we look over on this document, which this is the monthly settlement for NYMEX, all we got to do is go back to September, and we see it's .91. And we're just moving the decimal point here. When you see on this, this is traded in, you know, just a larger unit, it's really .51, plus you add whatever that or what the utility's charging to it. So the thought process is, is to capture January and February usage, which is where the bulk of the gas is going to be used. We need to do something before the middle of this month. Or we might as well wait, because we could catch February, but right now, the springtime is looking pretty good. And the risk is higher to just for one month, because we think we'll be able to get a better price. So what we're recommending, or at least asking to see if you're in agreement, and if you're not, that's okay, but it's our job to bring it to you, to allow a price to residents of .769 or less for a 12-month term, so 12 months. The reason, you could probably get a little bit lower than that if you wanted to extend. If you go out to the apples-apples, you'll see prices lower than that for a longer period of time. We don't think that's necessarily a good idea, because we think the price is going to come down, and to go longer just means our price is going to be higher longer. Now, that being said, we might get a price, say we get a price of .74, let's just say, and you've given us the authority to enact that. The price from the utility for January could be .65, in which case people can opt out and do that, or they can go on their own. Maybe there's a better deal. Our fear and our concern, and what we're trying to put in is, you know, whether you call it an insurance policy or a safety net, is what if it goes up to this 91, and now it's over $1 CCF for January and February when it gets cold? That's our concern. Our concern, and gas is different than electric, right, because the bulk of it is used in the cold months. The rest of the year, it doesn't, you know, a dollar or $5 when you use, you know, a half a CC, it doesn't really, isn't a factor. So we wanted to, you know, bring it to your attention. We've had this discussion in the past, but I wanted to bring these documents to show you. This is the problem that we're having, is that the market is moving this rapidly, and it's just been nonstop. And if you look back at the NYMEX settlements, you can see what we're talking about from, you know, last spring, when this, you know, this was packed, we got approved as an aggregator, there hasn't been an opportunity, you know? And it's just, it's kept up. Now, today, it was back down into the 50s, and we're hoping within the next week it continues and it's comes back down to this low point so that we could act and get something again as a safety blanket. Will the price look great come April, May? No. But nobody's going to be using gas, and they can opt out, and it does not prevent us, and our hope is today, that we will be able to, for next winter, here in April, May, it's looking like prices, hopefully, are going to keep dropping. But it doesn't stop us from bidding out the next contract, because we're only doing a 12-month. So we can sign up, if it's advantageous to do so, in May to start the following, you know, to start in November of next year, or that would be January of next year, January 24. And we would recommend that if the prices get to there in the spring, which are looking like a possibility. But our concern today is, what will January and February hold? And the residents have passed this, and if we have the opportunity at least to put some type of safety net in place, do we do it? And that's, again, that would be, so any questions you have to help on that decision for you, I'm happy to answer.
So what's the term that you're suggesting?
We're only suggesting 12 months, because we believe the markets will come down, and we don't want to be locked in long-term.
So that means this will come in next November?
Yeah. So, like you-
But you're saying the prices are going to drop this spring?
That's what it's looking like today.
So why wouldn't we six months?
What's that?
Why wouldn't we not do six months?
Your aggregation, the minimum that you can do is 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
That means we're going to watch the market until next November if we sign?
Well, if we don't move forward with this resolution tonight, then, whether we do or we don't, I should say, we're going to be watching the market, you know, when you do a 12-month, you're going to watch the market, you know, and for the best opportunity, which is what we've been doing. It doesn't change. We're going to continue to look for the best opportunity. You know, part of it is, why would you want to go long when-
No, I'm not suggesting that.
No, no, I'm not saying you are. But from our standpoint is, is, you know, some things could change legislatively here in another couple of years that could change some of these things, and we don't want to be tied in with if markets drop. So, but yes, we have to do 12 months, because that's a PUCO requirement. Our goal here, again, is, do we put something in place so that if the markets run up when it gets cold, we at least have something already in place? It's kind of like with the electric. It ran up, but once it ran up, it was too late. If, you know, we have communities that have 4.6, it's because we did it prior to the run-up.
Right. So what are you suggesting?
We're suggesting to allow us to sign on the township's behalf if we can get .769 cents or less for 12 months.
Is it not .769 right now?
What's that?
I mean, is it not below that right now?
It is, today. This wouldn't start until January 1st.
Okay. If weather plays a role-
But last month, it was .82.
Okay. But it's been, it's dipped down as far as .1, .5 here recently in November?
It was just below, but now, let's not confuse, that is the raw cost of gas. You get added to that. But center points priced to residents in October was above 80 cents. It's 61 cents for November.
So-
So, yes, even though we're-
.50 translates into what?
What's that?
This .50 for November 22 translates into what? .50594 translates into what? Compare that to your number.
That's hard to say, because there's other factors that play into it. But let me, let's say this.
Okay, let's say-
Let's say we know that for November, that the center point is, the standard choice offer is down to .61 and some change. They probably purchased that at this timeframe.
Okay.
Okay? So-
One of the things, Mr. Culpe, I have this experience, having worked in gas supply and planning at the old Dayton Power and Light, that utility companies are constantly stacking contracts, and they're basically guessing the weather, and then they leave a portion of that open that they buy on what's called the spot market. So a portion of the base load is already paid at some of these lower rates from prior years that they buy on three, four, five-year deals. And then some of those deals are coming off and being replaced with some of these more expensive deals. That's why you can't directly-
That's what makes it hard for me to give you an exact, because I don't have all those factors. But we can, we can kind of get a close idea that we were at 82.
Right.
Then they went to 61. Well, what changed? That changed. You know, that changed. But the fear is, what happens if it goes to that?
Right. So it's going to be unusually warm for the next two weeks, right?
Yes. But-
So you would buy gas tomorrow?
We would hope that the prices, well, that's kind of the point. We're hoping the price, the market's going to kind of keep doing this. It's not, we're not at .76 today, okay? But what we're hoping is, is that it will keep doing this, and we're really looking at middle of the month, because if we can't get it done there because of the opt-out periods, and the time to get the letters approved, all that, we have to do something by the middle of the month.
What are we at more or less today?
What's that?
What are we more or less at today? You said we're not at .769.
No, I would say it's probably, it's probably between .78 to .8 on the open market.
Okay.
But again, we think, or I shouldn't say, we are hopeful that over the, with this warmer weather the next couple of weeks, like I said, it started dropping again, okay? Today, it started getting back in. It went from this, what were we talking about, a week ago, this low, and then it shot back up over $6, okay? Well, today, it was down to like 5.8 or 5, you know, and so we're hoping it's going to, it's going to continue. And what we're saying is, if it does, you know, had we had the ability to act when it did this, we would have acted.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay? And so what we're saying is, if that happens again, should we act? And I'm not, if we don't, then we do it in the spring, and that's fine, too.
You're asking us to give you a number, and I'm looking at charts that don't, the numbers don't have anything to do with the number you're asking us to give. So that's hard, that's the part that makes it challenging.
Well, these are, these are the actual raw costs. I guess the point of the chart is to show you the volatility, and what, why we're making the suggestion is, is that the fear is, if December turns really cold and the price of gas on the raw cost goes up to 70, 80, what the consumer's going to be paying is significant. And with these programs, there's no penalty for getting out. And so if we set a price and we get that, that's what they're going to pay, even if it goes to a dollar, 90 cents a dollar, they're paying this. If that doesn't happen, and it stays down here in the 60s or in the 50s, then they can leave this and go to this. But at least we've got something for them this, you know, for this winter that could be significant.
If I rephrase it, what I understand you're saying is that you want to look for the best price possible over the next two weeks, and I understand that. But at the same time, I think you're saying, I think you're saying that, or I think I'm hearing, that you want to buy it at tomorrow's price. So, like, we're really close. Tomorrow's price might be really close to the price we want to give you. So I'm just a little confused on what the numbers are.
Okay. So when you're saying tomorrow's price, you mean sometime over the next two weeks? Not actually tomorrow?
Actually tomorrow. I mean, you're saying .76, and I'm looking at this chart, and this chart says 6.2.
Yes. But then you have to add-
I know you have to add, so I'm trying to take that differential and put it in there. I think we're really close, and you said we're really close.
Yeah. So what we're hoping, what we're hoping is, we think that if the market can get down to the low 50s, 55 or below, that we should be able to achieve a finished price of that .76. Now, if it starts dropping, you know, we're going to, we're going to let it keep dropping, and we might, maybe we get .72. We don't, we don't know this.
Okay, okay.
But yes, I would say, based on this, we need to get down below .55.
Okay.
Okay? As of today, it wasn't there, but it's headed that way.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I mean, the variable rates for the standard choice offer through center point, what you're literally paying if you're not on a contract. So that was set today for November as .66 by center point. But last month, it was .84, and then just back in September, it was $1.11. So there's been a huge swing in just a couple of months. But again, that's a variable rate, and there's no guarantee. If you're at .66 now, you're going to be at .6 next month, certainly, because, again, it went from .6 back in March of '22 all the way up to $1.6 by June of '22. So, and then the 33-month contract that you can get under currently at .71, but that's, again, committing to 33 months, and-
We are not comfortable with that at all.
Their recommendation, you don't want to necessarily commit at this time to 33 months to get that price.
Right. And there's no reason, that price that you gave in June, there's no real matrix that it should have ever been that high. And that's the problem we're having, is the market is just going crazy. And so that's, again, why we're here, is do we put in that insurance policy, that safety net, so if it happens to do that for, you know, if that had been January, February, people would be screaming. I mean, that's a big heating bill, a big heating bill. So do we have the opportunity to offer them some relief? I don't know, but we would like the ability to, if the situation presents itself.
Let's just theorize that we move forward with something tonight, and the rate drops to 30 cents tomorrow. We're going to jump all over it. How quickly does our program step over what they're currently involved in? So if I'm just on, you know, with the old vector in center point right now, we've got this aggregation program, we've never really started it, but we decide to start it, we buy it at 30 cents. When does that person, is it start at the month?
It would be the January usage that they'll see on their February bill.
And if we waited, and if we gave you those authorization, and the market went through the roof, but then took a dip in December?
It's too late. Because then you're going to be, depending on when in December, if it was the first two weeks, you'd start February 1st. If it's after that, you wouldn't be till March, and at that point, we'd say, why? Because-
So in order to get this contract in place for our residents beginning January 1st, the deal has to be locked in within the next 10 days?
Roughly, yeah. That's fair. Yes. And it's not, again, we're saying, oh, you got to do it. It's a combination of the market did take a dip, and we're coming up to the point of no return. And so we view it as our job to come in and give you that information.
So for the typical residential customer in this region, you look at their gas usage over a 12-month period, what percentage of that gas is going to be consumed in January, February, and March?
Oh, I'd say it's probably 70, 80, 70 to 80%. I mean, unless you have gas dryers and gas stoves, those folks will generally use more throughout the year, but it's still not a great number. I mean, it's the furnace. That's the consumption. But the number of folks that have, you know, those other appliances is really, really small.
Any other questions?
I'll just say to that point, your table here doesn't correspond with, the price increase does not correspond to the usage of gas in the calendar year. So there must be some other, with the exception of last, this year.
Which one are you pointing out?
Oh, any year. I mean, so I just want to, I just want to clarify the fact that just because people are using gas doesn't mean the price of gas goes up. The price of gas in March of 2017 was .25, and let's say July of 17 was .29. In March of 2018, .25, and July of 2018, .29. You know, so it's, there are other factors at play besides usage.
It's, yeah, but it is storage and weather. I mean, the, so what, gas you can store, electricity you cannot. So when you have a large surplus-
Right. And Europe, I don't really want to go into this, but I think Europe is, I might be wrong, but I think they're full up to the gills with natural gas at the moment. And anyway, I agree with you. It's time to fish your cupcake. It's time to do this over the next two weeks. I'm just, I was just looking for some guidance on what number that you're looking for, and I think you gave that to us, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I just want to share for those who might be watching this online, I mean, this is all of public records and materials that were saved for us, but some information about some recent other communities and what they've done. So some, several southern Ohio communities, Batavia Township, Colrain Township, Sycamore Township, and Miami Township, Claremont County, started an aggregation contract for 24 months at 83 cents, 8.839, 84 cents. North Canton recently entered into a four-year contract at .525. What we're hearing from our representatives is that they do not recommend a four-year contract. We're looking at more of a 12-month contract. Wadsworth chose not to sign a new contract. Wadsworth, Ohio, they came out of a contract at a very nice rate of 30 cents, and they are now choosing to wait it out and not sign a new contract. Xenia signed a 12-month agreement at $1.2. So just for the record, some other information that we have been given and are studying prior to making any decisions on this resolution.
Mr. Morris, I did want to just note, I did reach out to the group that helped assist North Canton with that rate, because it was lower, certainly, but they didn't indicate North Canton, again, is not in the center point energy area, so there are- cost differences around the state between the distribution networks, so they have a area that's a little bit lower cost to serve than the CenterPoint Energy area is, apparently, so that's part of the reason why they've got a particularly lower price than what we might even be able to achieve here, so. I will make a motion to, um, wait a minute, let me find my agenda. Are we ready for motions on these things? Make a motion to approve the liquor permit for Bravo Brio. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
All right, it appears I jumped over the public comment portion of the meeting, now that I have my agenda back in front of me. Is there anyone wishing to come forward to make public comments? See, chief's here, are you gonna wait till, uh, we do department heads? Excellent. Anyone else? Young, young men from Chaminade Julian visiting, no public comments? Don't want to share your favorite color? Is it blue and, blue and green, I hope?
Yeah.
Well, that's good, you should have went to Fenwick. Fenwick is red. All right, I will pl, I will close the public comment period, and I will make a motion to approve Resolution 95 dash 2022. That is a resolution to approve amended appropriation of police department funds for 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 96 dash 2022, a resolution authorizing the township administrator to enter into an agreement with county corp to administer an owner-occupied home rehabilitation and improvement program. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Culp, on item 97?
Hey, I mean, I'm with you. I mean, you can read it.
I'd like to get your thoughts on if you agree with their recommendation, or would you have to, anything to change? This is, that was their recommendation, was .769 cents at 12 months.
So the way I understand this number is that it's around, when I look at this chart, it's around the 5.5 number, and, and I'm okay with that, because historically, going back a couple of years, that seems like a reasonable number.
Okay, why don't you make the motion?
Correct me if I said anything incorrect there, but, okay. Why do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah. If you don't mind.
I'd rather you do it. No?
I'm debating in, within my mind whether 769 is the right number.
Well, we don't have to do it today, if that's what you're thinking.
Well, I think we need to do it now, if we're gonna do it at all to impact this year. What our consultant is recommending is if we don't take action now, we would wait to the next meeting, we would miss the window to get something done for the January heating season.
Do you want to put another number in there? If we don't hit, we don't hit.
Looking at the apples-to-apples comparison through energy choice on what's available currently in our marketplace, you're seeing fixed rates at .779 for 12 to 18 months, .69 for 24 months. Some of those may have termination fees, though, you want to certainly note in those cases, so.
And so if we, uh, enter into this agreement, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask a question of our, our guest again, if you could come back up, and let's just say that we entered into an agreement, we sign it for whatever number we pick today, and then the sun comes out tomorrow, and it's just warm and really warm, and the price falls through the floor in January or March, our residents have the opportunity to opt out of our program at that point and go back onto the other program?
Yeah, at any point they can leave.
So there's no termination fee to get out of this rate if we negotiate it?
Correct. And, and the rate would, could be less if we wanted to do 24 months, and the reason is, is when they're doing that, they're purchasing further out, which we know is cheaper today. But the question is, for those short months, is it really worth to go long? And when you get out there, if, what if, you know, if the price is in the 40s or 50s and you're paying 80? I mean, that, you know, over the winter, that's a, you know, because we already discussed, three months we're using 70, 80%. We just don't think that's, that's viable, and the reason you're seeing those lower prices when you go out 18, 24, even at 18, because what does 18 do for you? It gives you two winters of usage. So I can lower that this first year a little bit, because if I get you at this higher price next year, I'm gonna make more money. So that's, that's why our recommendation is the 769, because we think that's within reach, but we, it, but we, you know, we could set it at probably 7.3 and said, well, let's go 18 or 24 months, but the problem is, is we're just not comfortable in that, that, that brings in the, the second winter. You know, it's, again, it's a little bit different than the electric side. We really have this period of months that we have to really, that's what we're strategizing for. And so if this starts January 1, if we go anything over 14 months, 13 or 14 months, we're two winters, we're two, we're two cycles. Where the electric gets a bigger usage every month, yes, you have up months and down months, but still the amount is larger and the usage is not, doesn't drop off. I mean, if you look at the gas usage in the spring through the fall, there, there just is a flat line. So the re, so yes, that number could be less if we wanted to include a second winter season, we don't think that's wise. So.
Okay. Thank you. So I will make a motion to approve Resolution 97 dash 2022, a resolution to authorize a natural gas aggregation agreement for, at a, at a provided price that be, that can be negotiated at or below the fixed rate price of .699 for a term of 12 months.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
All righty. We have no other resolutions, we have no public hearings, department head comments.
I have a quick one before the chief steps up, sorry, chief. Um, earlier this year, the Montgomery County Township Association solicited nominations for Township Employee of the Year, and on behalf of the police department, I submitted an, a nomination, and I'm very proud to announce that my nomination was chosen as Township Employee of the Year. So at the gala on November the 17th, Sergeant J. Ferris will be honored as being the, one of the Township Association's, uh, Township Employees of the Year. I just want to leave the board aware of that.
Excellent, excellent work. Thank you for taking the time to nominate one of our finest. Excellent, I appreciate the Montgomery County Township Association for recognizing his excellence and, uh, contributing in that award. That's great. Any other department heads? I just note, uh, there is an election, obviously, coming up next week, and just encourage everyone to go out and, if you're eligible to vote, to go out and exercise your right to vote and- Excellent. -get informed on all the issues and candidates out there, so. Chief Barnett, do you have anything?
So, um, just to basically, uh, tell you that Montgomery County Township Association as well, um, I was asked to nominate somebody, and one of our, my nominee was picked as well, and that was Battalion Chief Michael Rink. I'm not able to make the gala, nor is Battalion Chief Rink, but we both let them know, and we're very appreciative of him picking him. So, um, November 6 is daylight savings time, just want to remind everybody to, you know, check your batteries, change your batteries in your smoke detectors, and make sure you check your smoke detectors. So, anybody has anything for me?
Excellent. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Morris, I just wanted to let you all know the budget schedule, uh, over the next, several meetings. Uh, the next meeting will bring forth the initial draft of the appropriation budget for 2023, and for you, for you and fellow trustees to review and provide feedback to the department heads and the, and the finance staff. Then they'll, we'll have a public budget, uh, budget hearing sometime between then and the first meeting in December, with the, uh, with the intention of having a final vote on the appropriations for 2023 to be either at the first meeting in December or the second meeting in December, uh, to round out the year. So, just to give you all a heads up as to what will be coming down the pipeline in the next two weeks.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, we have no public hearings, department head comments, we already went through elected official comments, there's only the two of us. Mr. Culp?
Hey, I'll just reinforce, uh, don't forget to vote. 50,000 people have already voted, that leaves another 300,000 to go, so don't be one of the 150,000, maybe, that don't vote. Um, anyway, November 8th, thanks.
I have nothing. We have no scheduled work sessions. We are going to now enter into an executive session, presuming that we vote to do as much, and we may still have action to take in conclusion of that executive session, so will we, we are reserving the right to go directly into a adjournment, but we may actually, depending on the discussion in that executive session, come back here and take further action. So everyone is welcome to stay within the meeting. Uh, if we do come back and take further action, we will restart the, uh, the video to make sure that that is captured and shared for our audience online. So I will make a motion to adjourn into executive session for conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action in accordance with ORC 121.22 subsection G3. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And the time on that is 6:42. We are going into executive session. Thank you all.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
You got a vote, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
We have returned from executive session, having adjourned as such at 7:25 PM here on the evening of Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, so we are back in session for the Board of Trustees meeting. I will make a motion to approve the waiver of conflict of interest as submitted by the law firm of Mazinac, Raskin, and Rider LPA in the matter of Gillespie versus Miami Township, United States District Court, Southern District of Ohio, case number 313 CV416, and to authorize the township administrator to sign the waiver on behalf of the township. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:27. Thank you all.
Thank you. More than a minute. Keep your motion.